That would benefit all those that are currently unsheltered. And that although some of us may come from very humble beginnings ourselves, we are in places of privilege today. And that I just ask that we all be thoughtful in our process as we move forward in responding to the needs of those most vulnerable. And I can't, I'd be remiss if I didn't say happy birthday to Councilmember Dancy.
Did you say we need to sing happy birthday?
Yes, she did.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Freddie. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, baby. Right, thank you for everyone helping us to sing happy birthday. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Mahoney.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Freddie Dancy.
East side.
Councilmember Angelita Gunn.
Present.
Councilmember Laura Dryer Schlechtie.
West side.
Councilmember Karen Vanel.
Here.
Councilmember Will Forgrave.
Here.
All right, we are all present and accounted for. Looking for a motion to support to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. If I'm not mistaken, I think today may hopefully be the last meeting that we will have to use these buttons.
Don't you?
I'm not. I said hopefully. Okay, passes. Brings us down to citizen comment. I don't have any in front of me, so no, no citizen comment. Okay, Freddie is happy.
You know what?
I will allow it because as of right now, I'm considering you still Mr. Commissioner. Come on down.
Why, thank you, sir.
We'll still say all rules still apply, but take your time, brother.
Thank you, sir. You know, I'm gonna start with Merry Christmas. It has been a wonderful year and Merry Christmas not only to you, Mr. Mayor, to our City Council, but to our entire city that each and every one of you represent. Truly Merry Christmas. And if you don't celebrate Christmas, enjoy this winter time of the year. It is festive in many world cultures. We'll just say that. Solstice is a powerful time. And anyway, I wanted to come and give thanks one more time. I've done this a few times now this year, and every time I come and say thank you, it keeps getting better. And I don't know how this works, but I'm gonna keep working it. And the simple fact is, I think since the last time I was here, I've fixed my hip. I'm walking upright again. My foot is working well. I thought I was gonna have to leave the state to get the surgery I needed, and right at the last moment, Henry Ford came through, and I'm gonna get rescued right here in our own city of Jackson. I am so happy. That is my day tomorrow morning. Anyway, I know we've got some important business here today. And when it comes to the homeless, this is the highest priority that our city has. There is nothing higher. If you've got a roof over your head and there's somebody that doesn't, that is the priority. I question, though, if it's a governmental priority. And this is the balance that each one of us or each one of you have to decide, is that yes, this is a priority for our city, but where do we get the funding from? And I caution you, and this is my caution, is that if we allow the people to think this is a governmental problem, then our people in the city might say, well, I pay my taxes, I did my share. And at that point, the only solution would be the governmental solution. If we allow the people to say, this is a priority, each and every one of us, we are donating to whether it's the Interface Shelter, whether it's bringing somebody in, there's a thousand ways to help, but I think that we can do more for the homeless in our city, each and every one of us individually, and using our positions and leadership to encourage everyone else to do the same. I think we can do more as a city, whether it's, I think, five hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, one point five million, two point five million. It's never going to be enough. But if we look at the city and say, you know what? We need to do something as a city and let us contribute, I think we're gonna get ten times more because we're gonna have people giving out of their gratitude. And gratitude is the proper place to have gifts come from. And we will accept more in those free will gifts than we can ever do by taxing the people for something that is essential, but again, non-governmental. Just my own two cents, obviously, I don't have a vote at this table, and I'm thankful. I'm thankful that I don't have a vote at this table. I'm going to enjoy it, and I'm gonna wish you Merry Christmas one more time, Mr. Mayor. And that is my three minutes.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Right at the bell, Mr. John C. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John King, two zero three, Third Street, here in the city. I've been sort of over, you know, while you've been discussing over the months, actually now, what, my opinions, sending my opinions and stuff like that. So I don't know if you read my last one from late this afternoon, but I'll read it now just so everyone can hear what my thoughts are. City Council, regarding homelessness, housing instability, it was said among you, we're not built for this. That's what I have been telling you all along, including back in the days of Mayor Dobie's tenure, as was presented to you last week by Steve Castle, there are organizations that are built for it that already get government funding. Knowing that, it would be crazy and horribly irresponsible for you to go much past asking the city manager to task someone with the city to act as a liaison for the city to interact with the police and organizations that are built for and deal with homelessness or housing instability. From what I saw on Facebook, according to the individuals strongly pushing for you to spend like a drunken sailor on the alleged homelessness, housing, and stability program, the tent city closed after the money for the hotels was made available in some people's place. Put the city's money, including the ARPA funds, where it's supposed to go to like fixing streets or maintaining them, which is what leaf pickup equipment does. Tell the so-called nonprofits hoping for you to make it rain, they are not needed. So I would like to say Merry Christmas, and, but I won't, Happy Hanukkah, but I won't say Happy Kwanzaa because the guy that was the founder said, no people can be involved with it. So again, Merry Christmas.
I think that concludes our public comment. That brings us down to item number six, new business review proposals from local organizations on how city can combat homelessness in Jackson.
Can I ask that we start with what we were originally gonna do with the transitional housing, just to kind of update on the five houses? So that we know exactly what money we have to work with?
I think that's an excellent place for us to start, Ms. Laura. So I think everybody has that. Shout out to the city manager. I know he's homesick, but still probably watching right now, so I definitely want to give him some recognition right quick. But in his place right now, we do have Mr. Laporte. Mr. Laporte, do you want to go over that? Or maybe Mr. Attorney? I don't know which one of you guys will be prepared to kind of discuss that ARPA allocation activity to date.
Mr. Mayor, I can help with the discussion in this. Thank you, Councilman Schlechtie. Regarding the one house that had been put out for bid, four zero four Home Wild Street, that has a pending rehab project on it right now for a hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. That was an awarded bid. It currently is stalled out, just waiting for the contractor to work out some issues that he had. He has met with our chief building official, Mr. Taylor, and assures us the project can be finished in the spring. The only other project that really had any substantial work on it was the Hollywood Project. Hollywood one zero nine incurred approximately twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one in lead and asbestos-related activity, along with a twenty-seven hundred dollar cleanup. About the time after that work was complete and we were getting ready to put out for bid, council decided to stop the transitional housing program rehabilitation. Therefore, the project was stopped, and that shell of a house is currently listed. And there are two parties interested in the purchase and have spoken with the agent about that purchase price. Chidok Street did incur about fifteen, one thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars in some cleanup costs. Change order was completed to stop the lead removal after council had decided not to do the transitional housing. Eleven hundred, agent was sold for ten thousand dollars. And pending now is for Twenty-Nine St. Clair. If council decides after tonight that they still wish to not proceed with transitional housing, that will likely be a house that chief building official will have condemned. Are there any questions?
Have to get over this.
So let's just, we'll do a round robin of questions. Laura, I can definitely start with you. Or do you want me to start somewhere else? Because I...
If you want. I have a tickle in my throat that if someone else wants to start, let me get over this for a minute.
Okay. Who else may have some questions right now? I think everything is pretty clear to me, but just wanna just publicly state, this fund started at a million dollars. The one question I would have is for the twenty-nine thousand, for lead abatement, was that out of that allocation or did that come from the lead and asbestos program that we have?
That was from the allocation.
Okay, so my question would be the demolition cost to demolish St. Clair or any of these other properties, would that come out of the seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that's remaining? If not, how would it be paid for?
The city has a demolition fund, and it would be prioritized based upon where it's at and how much of a hazard it is. This one would likely be put on a waiting list for quite some time, just based upon where it's at.
Okay. And then Home Wild, when I saw pictures of that in its current state, I'm curious as to how come they haven't attacked that roof before they started doing any of the other work? Because the roof looks like it's in pretty bad shape now. I can't see it from other than on the road.
I can address that. Previously, what we did with, when we had federal dollars for rehab, is we would have to hire contractors who specialized in lead anytime it was over fifty thousand dollars. But that increases the costs substantially, and it's hard to find lead contractors. Therefore, Mr. Taylor deemed it more prudent to have all of the lead removed. That way, you would not need to have a lead contractor, and any contractor could then bid on the work.
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure that addresses the roof issue, though. That, I mean, we're putting money into a property that's not protected by its roof. Maybe that's not that important at this moment in time.
That isn't the scope of work, but we had to get rid of all of the lead. So this project hasn't proceeded past the lead abatement.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And so all that's been done is the lead abatement.
I see. Okay. All right. And then, so the fifty-eight thousand dollars that we've spent is basically lead abatement and some cleanup?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have for questions on that. Thank you.
Sir Will, did you have questions? Okay.
Could I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just ask those numbers? Where am I missing those? I don't think I got that one.
Here, do you want?
Okay. I do. So these were the five properties that we originally started out with wanting to do transitional homes with, right?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay. So I can follow you off. Thank you.
Okay. So no further questions on that.
Do you need action on this or not at this point in time?
On this?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think there's any action that we need to take on this.
Okay.
In my opinion. Is there something that you had in mind?
No, I just didn't know if we wanted to...
I think this was just an update on where we were. I think we pretty much kind of already took action on...
The other stuff. I just wanted to know where the money was.
That we...
And based on what we do tonight, then we may want to take action on this at the next meeting.
I'm confused on what action we will be taking on this.
Well, we would have, right now, the, based what Mr. Laporte had said, is based on what we want to do with these properties, whether we're gonna continue down the transitional housing with these, or if we're gonna take the seven hundred and seventy-three thousand remaining dollars and use it elsewhere, which I think is where we're all leaning, I would think, and I'm just saying, we may want to deal with that at the next meeting that's not in December. And if so, they can figure that out then.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it requires action. I mean, we already stopped the bid on the one house, and this is how we derived, arrived at the conversation that we're having right now, is that we asked staff to help provide us some additional options in looking at what we wanted to do instead of putting all that money into, I mean, it looks like one of the houses, we literally would have had to totally rebuild. I don't know how that got on this list of five. But yeah, I don't think there's any, unless anybody sees anything different than I do. I don't think there's a requirement for us to take any particular action on this. This was just an update to let us know what money has been spent out of the million-dollar allocation that we made for transitional housing and what was left in that fund so we can have a better idea of what money was still actually left there. So...
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that as we're moving ahead, since it's been raised as a question, that anything that we propose tonight fits within the bounds of the ARPA housing allocation.
I think that would be the understanding.
Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure that that's clear to everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that everybody else's understanding, staff included? I guess that question would be directed to as well? So, okay.
Thank you.
I think that's a good question for clarification, whereas that way it clarifies where the dollars we're talking about are coming from.
Thank you.
And it's minus the ten and the three thousand that we gave at the last council meeting, I would assume? For the motel and the sleeping bags?
The three has not been spent because they haven't been able to find any of those.
Yeah, I saw that in the memo.
Uh, but the ten, I'm assuming that's where that was pulled from.
So we have seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, plus or minus.
Okay. I think we should allow, if there's someone present, for like a brief explanation and opportunity for questions for each of the proposals, unless anybody objects to that. I know that the city manager also sent a, like an overview as well, a letter, just a letter, provided overview. So I think that's kind of what I would like to start with because I do have a few questions for some clarifications.
Can we, do you mind if we have Cory kind of update us on what happened with the ten thousand, how that went?
Sure.
And the problems he...
We can, we can do that first, absolutely. I definitely was planning on swinging back around today because I have some questions around that as well. Mr. Mase, would you mind just giving us, I mean, I think you did a, one, I think you did a phenomenal job providing us an update, a written update on the hotel emergency housing for homeless individuals and families. But instead of asking you for an update, I think what I would rather do is ask council what questions they may have regarding the update that he provided.
Well, can I ask one question? Are the, and I didn't look online, are these documents uploaded online so the general public can see them?
I would assume they are part of the packet for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
If not, I think that's a small update that we can ask staff to make.
Okay.
Documents available. So while everybody else is thinking of some questions pertaining to the report that was given, I will start with a few questions that I have. One, again, thank you. I know this was kind of thrown at you out of the blue. I think that by looking at the balance that we have, that it's very obvious that there was a high need, and with understanding that we are supposed to get some actual Michigan weather coming through here, that the need will probably continue. The questions that I would have is, do you have a count of how many of the individuals that were served were actually street homeless?
No. I don't have an exact number, unfortunately. I do not.
Is there a possibility to get a rough estimate of how many of those individuals were actually street homeless? Not tonight, but just for our future reference?
I think we can come reasonably close, yes.
Okay. Is there any additional data that might be able to be provided to us from this, from this report? I think that the application was pretty thorough. I guess I'll, I'll be a little more direct. My question would be is can we, can we receive like a breakdown of this data? Of course, like names, addresses, ages, gender, all of that type of stuff is not important to me, but starting from like the explanation for homelessness or explanation for housing emergency from that point down, is there any way we can turn it into like a data report so we can have a better understanding of who we served, how they were served, where they were referred from? Just, I think that would be helpful to all the council and even being able to provide that information to our public on the total of forty-six individuals that were helped over just the last seven days.
Yes, we can, we can put together a report that will come reasonably close to getting most of those answers. We made sure that we were collecting as much of that data as we could get for this purpose and also for federal reporting guidelines. There are some limitations, of course, just with that population and being able to reach them in that way. Some of those questions, we can answer for everyone, but we have done our best, I think, to come, to come pretty close so that we can have an accurate picture for you.
Okay. Council, what other questions do you guys have? Laura?
On the twenty-seven households, were they unique households or were they the same households utilizing the space?
Twenty-seven unique households.
Okay.
I'm sorry I left that word out. That would have been important.
And do you know how many average nights each roughly?
We started the program, council met last week on Tuesday. We started the program on Wednesday, that first night, which was Wednesday, the fourteenth, we only housed two individuals. It was a bit of a slow start. We didn't get it out until about mid-afternoon. So it was a bit of a slower start. But after that, the next night, we began housing people for two or three nights, but learned very quickly that the need was for seven to nine nights, which is what we had left in the ten days. We originally started thinking that one or two would be, you know, kind of a transitional base, but in reality, we had a transportation limitation just to get folks where we needed them to go. And it was getting colder, and it became clear that looking at the longer-term stays, we're going to be more beneficial for those individuals. So we went with stays of seven to nine days, starting on day two and three.
And I assume that the people who connected you with the people who needed the housing helped with the transportation? Or did the city have to provide that?
No, the city provided no transportation assistance. We utilized, we utilized in large part TJ Setliff, who works for JHC. She had some good connections with the folks over in Tent City, the street homeless population. We also utilized some folks that had their own vehicles, and then, of course, other kind of miscellaneous needs based on maybe where they were recommended from.
And on the form, if I answered no, that I don't live in the city of Jackson, what would happen?
Though we would have had a conversation trying to establish where residency was. Of the people who submitted a form to us, we, I don't have an exact count, and I apologize. We tried to make it a point to speak with every individual, not just the agency they came from or the person who was referring them, but with those individuals, either in person or over the phone, to try to make sure that we understood that we were serving first the population that resides in our city limits.
And where did you get the form from?
You mean before they filled it out or after? I apologize.
Before.
The form was originally started by John Willis with the city. John provided that to us just as a starting point after council's meeting last week. Then we took that form and edited it for our own needs and made sure that we were collecting the data that we thought was necessary from a federal standpoint and from a city standpoint.
And one last question. After this experience, what would your recommendations be to help solve this issue?
That's a complicated question. But I think a really good one. So I think in my report, I was able to highlight not just twenty-seven unique households, but forty-six total individuals in this first round. I also mentioned that we have a waiting list of twenty-six people, mixed with families and individuals in double-ups. Rough math makes that waiting list about another forty-six to fifty on top of what we've already housed. Those are just the people that we know about. However, it's also sometimes difficult for us to get a handle on exactly what that need is and if there are some other options that might be available aside from utilizing this program. We acted as a gatekeeper, so to speak, to figure out who was the most in need and who we could serve. And that can become a difficult position to be in. That is not easy work, and I think we learned some humbling lessons about what our other social service agencies in town have gone through and the amazing work that they have done over the years, maybe that we haven't even realized. I think my number one takeaway would be the learning. The learning that we did as a staff to really understand the brevity of the need, the depth of the issue, but also the amazing amount of work that has happened in a space that we have not existed in with capacity that we have not historically utilized or had in some cases. And that was a valuable lesson, I think, for us to take away, is what is needed besides just the, just the housing that we did, what's needed from a transportation standpoint, a food standpoint, mental health standpoint, wraparound services? We've talked about those a lot, and those are all pieces within this program that we did not provide, that we weren't able to provide. We didn't have the funding or the capacity to do those. So I'm thankful that as a staff, and I really say as a staff, this was not just, not just a project that I did, but a project that many other staff members had a huge hand in, from Shannon Williams to just the ladies at the front desk on the third floor and many floors in City Hall who receive calls every day where people waiting and asking questions. We could not have done this with just one person. So I was really thankful to have that experience, John Willis, always on call when I needed something. That was huge. And so I think that really taught me just the amount of staff hours that would be needed for something like this for our own organization or for any outside organization. It's not a small undertaking. So thankful that we were able to do the work and also continuing to learn lessons along
Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Karen, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think you went through everything pretty thoroughly, but I do at least want to say thank you to you and the staff, and obviously John Willis, for taking the ball and running with this, so to speak, with not a lot of time to really prepare for it. I know that you probably put quite a bit of work and hours into this, and you can, you can obviously tell by the amount of people that you've helped with this program. So I just want to at least thank you and the staff for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Will?
Yeah. To echo that, thank you so much for all the work you put in the last week and a half. Just, not a question, but just a quick point of clarification. We asked for individuals' last address, just by the very nature that people were helping. We asked for individuals' last address, just by the very nature that people we're helping. They oftentimes don't have addresses because they're homeless. So, um, just to, just to clarify that, um, wanted to make that clear.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, thank you to Cory and, uh, John, probably the two most involved, but I know the other staff, um, assisted you, um, in this endeavor. And it's only been a week, really. It's only been a week and I think you've done a, a good job. And, and your report, uh, came out well. But I do understand some of the questions that, uh, Laura had there, it to, to break it down, the unique and the, uh, the street homeless, you know, trying to get our minds wrapped around it, um, and, and be understanding, um, you know, we're not the experts. I'm, I'm one to admit, I'm, I'm not an expert on homelessness. And, um, I really think that, you know, the work that you guys stepped right into to help us get through this first 10 days was amazing, to, to say the least. So I'm, I'm interested in seeing where we, where we go from, from here. I know it's taking a lot of manpower, um, right from the City Hall and the funding, you know, to do it the way that we did for these last 10, or last week here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Eastside.
No questions.
The other Eastside.
So, um, I just, I just want to say that it's, um, you, you pulled this together very quickly. Thank you to you and your staff. It's a lot of work to do this and, um, it's just amazing to see that, how quickly $10,000 can be spent. So, um, yeah, and it's disheartening to see that people will be exited, so to speak, um, on December 24th. So, um, yeah, it's just something, something to note.
All right. Uh, I will echo, uh, my, uh, fellow council members in saying thank you. Uh, thank you to you, thank you to your staff, thank you really to all our city staff for pulling together, um, and, uh, carrying this in this interim. I don't have any other questions. You've answered all my questions and I appreciate, uh, the work that you're doing.
Thank you. It, it was truly an honor. It was a, a huge privilege to be part of this project and, uh, and humbling at the same time. But a very gratifying work to do on behalf of, of the city and, and you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, council, what I think, um, I would recommend for us to do is to, uh, before we go on to, um, presentations by the individuals who submitted proposals, uh, because, uh, what I think we're going to find is no matter what direction we go on one of these proposals, based on the data that we just received on just simply a seven-day period, if we don't decide on something that we can do on a longer term, this is just literally putting a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. So at this time, I would ask for a motion on the, uh, recommendation from, uh, Jonathan on the pallets and the idea of moving forward with, uh, working on the lease and just, uh, putting forth a motion on that particular item, uh, at this time is what I would be interested in entertaining right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the purchase of 10 shelters, 64 temporary shelters from Pallet PBC in the amount of $150,000 for, $150, $400,000, um, using funds previously allocated for transitional housing. And also, do you want to do one motion? Uh, and also direct, um, the city manager and city attorney and other pertinent city staff to, uh, pursue the lease of the TA Wilson School from, uh, Jackson Public Schools.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Um, one thing that I want to make sure that we, um, cover when it comes to the pallet, uh, shelters is I just want to also make sure that, um, any ordinances that might need to be adjusted. I don't know if our city attorney needs to take a look at that because I know we have the campground, there was the issue, I know we discussed before about campgrounds. So I just want to make sure that that's not going to impede getting these placed.
Mr. Attorney, any clarification you want to add to that?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to address that, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Bennell. There's, there's really three specific issues that I see relative to the pallet shelters. One, you can obviously make an allocation to procure them. And as Manager Green has pointed out a couple of council meetings ago, there's the inevitable infrastructure costs associated with having them up and running. Uh, electricity, um, some form of sanitation, whether it's through the TA Wilson School, which, which could be part and parcel of that for bathroom facilities or showers and the like, um, other infrastructure costs, water, foundation issues. So there are those infrastructure cost that council has been made aware of. Estimated probably ballpark 10 times or more what the cost of the acquisition of, of, um, the pallet structures themselves are. The second substantive issue is the building code. I know I briefed you in a memorandum last month on that specific issue. Chief Building Official Taylor has also articulated some concerns relative to, uh, these particular structures meeting the building code. And then third, and perhaps most importantly, to Councilwoman Bennell's direct point, is the enabling legislation. Typically, when these are done, um, the best example I can give recently is in the city of Kalamazoo, but whether you're talking San, Sacramento, California, Madison, Wisconsin, Boston, Massachusetts, each of those municipalities have, uh, allocated funding and created what's referred to as a pallet shelter or temporary housing community under emergency ordinance legislation. And declaring homelessness, as everyone in this packed council chamber can attest, it being a public health emergency and as Mr. Mayor has alluded to, because of the cold weather, something that needs to be dealt with immediately, short-term, near-term, and then of course, long-term. So what has often happened is municipalities have adopted emergency ordinances making, uh, a declaration specifically that homelessness is in fact a public health crisis and then providing the parameters under which these temporary shelters can be located, whether it's on private property, whether it's on public property. So that's, I know it's a lot of information, but acquiring the pallets is one thing. The building code, the infrastructure costs and the legislation to get them up and running are all things that would happen, uh, in the near-term and I presume can be worked on if they're ordered. I, I believe, and anyone on the dais can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was about an eight-week lead time, as I recall, from the representative at Pallet to get these ordered and, and up and running. So we may have to the end of February to work out some of those issues, certainly other council meetings to address it. So with that information, happy to entertain any other questions relative to those. But building code infrastructure and the, uh, enabling legislation vis-a-vis an emergency ordinance are the three pertinent issues that I see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Additional comments?
Could you maybe speak to, um, I know Jonathan isn't here, but I, I think you're aware as well of the terms of the lease, at least the handshake agreement you have with the schools at this point?
Sure, and there's, there's a saying in the law, there's no deal till there's a whole deal. And it obviously incorporates both your direction and Jackson Public Schools. But we did have a productive dialogue that was spearheaded by, uh, Manager Green. He had communications, I believe, with Superintendent Beal. They're already on board and pursuing the lease. So, uh, as the motion's on the floor, you'd give authorization to myself and Manager Green to, to finalize the terms of that lease, which would basically be a dollar. Uh, we're looking at a short-term lease while we can explore potential options related to TA Wilson. But believe we'd have finalized lease ready for execution, um, within a week or two if council, um, moves forward to approve it.
And when you mean short-term, what are we talking?
The preliminary discussions, Councilwoman Gunn, were to extend a short-term lease through the end of March. Um, and that would enable a lot of the players that, um, have presented to council and are presenting this evening to perhaps actually do a physical walkthrough of the building. We're still doing our due diligence, um, relative to the infrastructure, the boiler, what deferred maintenance may be needed in the building itself to get it up and running. And then if the physical infrastructure is in place, then how do we sort of whiteboard ideas, whether it be utilized as a warming shelter in the near-term and then future uses down the line with input from all the community players in the homelessness space that are, that are willing, ready and able to assist us.
Thank you. So I am, um, I'll be voting no on this one. Although I think the pallets and TA Wilson are a good long-term option. I don't think the city is at a point where we know who's going to run it, who's going to clean it, who's going to maintain this overall. And we're dealing right now with what's going to happen in the next 90 days. And I think it would be before we spend, um, $300,000 between the pallets and the buildings, not to mention the improvements and the installment, installment of the pallets and the improvements of the building. I think we're, we're setting ourselves up for failure without knowing what the long-term goal is of those, of, of the building. Especially the building. I mean, there's some great ideas out there, don't get me wrong, but I, the city is not in a place to be, we are not the people. We don't have the staff, I don't know that Cory can add it to his job description, to, to run this stuff. And I think it would behoove us to have a, a master plan in place for homelessness. And if that is a, if TA Wilson and pallets and tiny houses and, uh, multi-units and, and housing is, is all in that game from, from the, from the, um, uh, sleeping bag that you give that one person on this end of the spectrum that won't let you help them? All the way to this person who wants to be that homeowner and take care of their own yard and all of that stuff? How do we help along that contum, continuum? I just don't think we're there to make that decision at this moment in time. I'm prepared to make a 90-day decision, but not, that's a, that's an extremely long-term decision and those conversations should start now, but I can't vote on that right now. So I will be a no.
Any other comments?
I'm, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Schlechtie's comments and concerns. I, uh, I think it's a midterm solution or to long-term and I think that what we're dealing with tonight is immediate. And, um, I, I too think the pallet ideas, I, I've, I think they're a great idea for a lot of reasons. But I'm not sure that with, there's so many questions unanswered about the cost, not just the purchase of the pallets, but the additional costs, um, even for the gas and electricity and things like that. So, um, I just feel like this is another conversation on another day.
Any additional comments?
Yes, I think, um, given, um, the city manager and the city attorney's ability to, to continue to negotiate, I, I agree with that. Um, but, um, I don't know, I want to, want to vote on that tonight. I think there's something down the road. I, I'm more interested in what Councilwoman Gunn said, just look at what we have on the table tonight. Something that's immediate, so we can take care of it, um, uh, and, and just go forward with that. Yeah, I'm just, and I, I don't know, just have a hard time with, with the pallets overall, so. Yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
So my comment, um, to council would be this, um, the, if, if TA Wilson is going to work, I think realistically on a renovation, we still 18 months out. I'm totally revamping and making that space be usable for any sort of idea. That doesn't matter who decides to come in and do wraparound services. Who decides to come in and participate or help with the idea? And then what do we do next year when we're back in the same situation, right? We just saw a report, which is why I wanted to take this item first, instead of the interim, like, immediate need, uh, of the next 90 days. The long-term, I think, is more important for us to make a decision on because we know we're going to have a 90-day decision that we make, right? We got three options that all look very promising to fulfill what we need over the next 90 days. If whatever we allocate to it even lasts 90 days, if it lasts 90 days. Because 90 days from now, we might just be just into the thick of what winter is in Michigan. And it's still going to be a whole lot left. So then are we going to come back again? So to me, the pallets fit right in that space and exactly what we talked about prior, which is the potential of using the annexed building as a warming shelter. Families warming for day, pallets as an addition to that space. While whatever happens inside of TA Wilson gets figured out. Which I, I also think that as far as cost, the addition of TA Wilson being in the picture significantly reduces the cost of pallets being a part of the entire scope. Because just like I said in the last meeting, this isn't, this isn't like, uh, a la carte menu. I don't think we have to pick one item and say that this is the fix to the situation. I think that we can do a combination of things. To me, this is the combination of things, right? TA Wilson in combination with the pallets, the pallets, I think we could get done in 90 days. In that scope of, okay, we've got whatever project happens with hotels and whoever's going to manage that. And the interim, figuring out an IRP for whoever's going to manage the pallet shelters, warming shelter. Cause like, let's be honest, we're not equipped to do that either, even if we just say, well, we just want to do a warming shelter. We're not equipped to do that either, which means we're still going to need somebody to fulfill that need, right? That can be worked on, but we have to make a decision, in my opinion. Like, we have to make a decision. As far as the, uh, building code slash like enabling legislations, uh, we are the legislative body. That is the beauty of that problem right there. I think that could be resolved in one of two ways. It can be an ordinance, which of course we all know takes a little bit more time. But I think that if we are trying to stop people from dying on the streets, I don't really see anybody complaining about us making a definitive decision on what route we decide to go. If we want to do something faster, we can do an, uh, a resolution. And to me, the resolution or ordinance would be surrounding emergency temporary housing. I think that's a very, it's that, like, we don't have to recreate the will on that. That, that exists. We can take it and apply it for what we need here to make sure that we're not outside of any ordinances. Doing it at TA Wilson will be easier for us to be able to pull power. That's something I've already verified with the city manager, uh, which I think again would significantly reduce the cost in that space. And that space inside of that fence, key word, inside of a fence, we don't have to worry about that. And then on top of that, we also don't have to worry about how flat it is. It is moderately flat on that surface, which is all it needs to be. It doesn't need to be a poured foundation underneath those. So to me, it's a combination that we would be looking at and this is a first step. I don't think it's going to allow, it, I don't think it's going to put us too deep. Because if we figure out, you know what, it's just not going to work for a long-term solution. This is a temporary lease that just still allows us to have something further than just hotels for right now. And then those pallets, we own those because just like was pointed out to me earlier, like what about those individuals who have pets who can't go into a hotel? This still is a, this is a part of the whole solution. And while we're not here to like try to solve the whole gap, we are here to do what we can do. Which is all that should be expected of us, which is to do what we can do. And I think this is something that we can do, gives us adequate enough time to be able to figure out the logistics of how to make it happen. And then it extends the amount of time for us to actually be able to make a longer-term decision on if the entities that exist, that are the experts in our community, that could make something like the TA Wilson project work, to be able to come to the table and figure out a comprehensive plan for that space for long-term. So hopefully, we're not here at the September 2023, October 2023, November 2023, December 2023 meetings having this same very discussion about trying to figure out what to do about people who are unfortunately not housed. I will offer one last opportunity for additional comments, and then after that, I think we should vote our conscience. So we'll start from this side. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, TJ. We have already passed the public comment portion of the meeting. So I will start with the other east side and just work our way back around on final comments on this particular topic.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think, you know, there's Jonathan's email about meeting with stakeholders. I think that's a great idea. The additional potential cause for the critical components of the infrastructure, the building itself, let alone the infrastructure and support from many social service agencies that would be managing the activities. I think there's a lot of still very open questions. I don't think it's just $150,400 price tag. I think it could be much higher than that. And I, I feel like we could still come back to this in January as a, as a second step two. So those are my only other comments.
Mr. Dancy?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm thinking that we can continue to work on the, the leasing of the building. I guess my, my drawback is I don't have a complete full picture of where we're going to be in the purchase of, of Wilson School. Even though I like the idea of having one central location, but I'm thinking that the overall cost and where does that leave us as a city? We have a building we need to maintain. And I just don't see where we have the ability to do that through staff. Definitely not council. I mean, I mean, we're all going to be involved in it. But I just think it's a, it's a big piece to decide on right now to go forward with this full commitment to that project. I'm hoping we don't stop and wait till September. I, I'm hoping we keep this near and dear so that we have a full understanding. I, I also have a, a little bit of the drawback with the ordinance that are needed, the, the ordinance that's in place. How, how do we, say justify that we are going to do it differently? Pallets are a great idea, but we got the building code, we got the ordinances that are in place. How, how do we override that and make this decision tonight? I'm thinking we need to work very hard at it and be able to make a decision before we get to the March 31st date. So that's, that's my comment. I don't want to eliminate anything by any means. I think everything out here is worth looking into and it's worth, you know, to help the people that are homeless. And then the agencies that work with it every day, you know, I'm kind of trying to keep myself informed of what, you know, what they're capable of doing. Because I don't think we have the staff or the people here with the expertise to handle that type of service to our community. But we should be a part, we should be involved in it.
You know, to speak to both parts of the motion, I think to kind of echo Councilwoman Schlechtey's remarks and Councilwoman Gunn's remarks, I think the pallet shelters are a good long-term solution, period. And to the TA Wilson part of the, the motion, I think, you know, if it, if the motion was to purchase the building, I would be a no vote too. The motion's to spend $1 over the course of three months to look more into it. So I'm willing to allocate a dollar to look more into it.
Councilmember Keir?
I, I struggle with this one a little bit back and forth. I, I know that, you know, we've had differing opinions in terms of, you know, do we push this further down the road and the long, push, push the long-term solutions further down the road until we have a better grasp of what the total cost is going to be and who's going to be running everything? But I, I struggle with, this is, this is an investment. Like, when I think of something big, something long-term like this, this is an investment that the city is putting towards a specific issue, which is homelessness, which we have known about for years. But more so, you know, more, most recently. This is obviously something that has been a hot topic for us within even the last year. And like I said, this is an investment. So I know Mayor Mahoney has talked about this is something that we can easily, you know, we can, you know, if, if something, you know, we get a couple of months down the road and we're figuring out, this is not, you know, a great, this isn't a great fit, we can simply say this isn't going to be a great fit anymore. I know, again, and Mayor Mahoney has also mentioned, this is a temporary lease. This isn't something that we're buying the building. I know that a lot of us kind of struggle with, you know, not having the final numbers. I'm a numbers person. I like to know how much money we're putting into something, especially something that we're getting. Federal funds, state funds, we're getting all of this money from the government to do with as we see fit within, within certain parameters. But this is a serious issue and something needs to be done about it. I hesitate to keep kicking the can further down the road. And I know that these, you know, these 90-day solutions that have been put before us, those are 90-day solutions. So are we going to be having this exact same discussion, having four council meetings, going on, talking about this issue with, again, nothing being done? I want to, I, I, I want to see results. I want to see, I want us to put our money where our mouths are. We all know that this is an issue that we care about. Can we prove it? That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Schlechtey?
I agree with Angelita. And I guess I want to ask a question of our attorney, city attorney. The memo says the, the lease would be, it says zero in here, but it's probably a dollar, that we'd be picking up the monthly, I'm talking about TA Wilson and not the, the pallets. We'd be picking up the monthly expenses. Given these costs will be with us after we buy the property. So is, is the Jackson Public School Board only willing to lease the property in light of the fact that they see a purchase agreement at the end of the tunnel? Or is it, they're willing to lease it even if the city did not purchase it?
That's a great question, Councilwoman Schlechtey. I don't have the definitive answer on that because I don't want to speak for JPS. But my understanding would be if we did a temporary lease through the end of March, it would be essentially utilized as our due diligence period while we negotiate a potential purchase of the property. You are correct that if we were to negotiate such a lease, the city would incur the utility cost because of course we'd be occupying the building, water, sewer, electric, gas. We would, we would incur those costs, which during the winter months, obviously, the heat of a building of that size are not insignificant. But the short answer to your question is it remains to be seen.
Okay. If it's a lease for a dollar or less, not sure you can get less than that right now, but I am, I'm not opposed to the, the TA Wilson because we were looking at Segway as an option for their building for a warming shelter. However, the pallets, I still, I still would have an issue because, and I'm not even sure I'm on the TA Wilson because what would we have to do to make that a warming shelter operational? Would it be less than paying $115,000 for the Segway option? In the proposal that was given to us last time, the only number that I saw in there that maybe we shouldn't incur was the $25,000 for the upgrades to the facility. And I look at that as a business and say, hey, maybe instead of $25,000, we offer a lease amount of $2,000 a month and they can use that $6,000 towards their upgrade. Because they would receive the benefit of the upgrade of the facilities once the lease for three months was up. So I would assume that at a minimum, we still have to incur the other amount because you have to have the people there to help the people in the warming shelter. So it's not just a dollar lease, it's now, what is that, nine, $90,000? Did I do my math right? 115 minus 25,000? And do they have little toilets in TA Wilson? Because it was an elementary school. I mean, I don't know. I just, I think TA Wilson is a great option. I just don't feel comfortable making that type of investment at this moment in time without knowing who's going to run it. How is it going to be run? Where's the money going to come from when we go over budget? Because we will go over budget. Same thing with the pallets. I just think there's a long-term. I'd much rather see a strategic planning session with all the players in place. And if the city can help, somebody comes to us and says, if you buy STA Wilson, this is what we will do with it and this is how it will help ground zero person all the way to homeownership, then I'm all in. I'm all in. But until I know who's going to clean the bathrooms and mop the floors and counsel the people that need the counseling, I can't, I can't take that big of leap at tonight's meeting.
So my, my concern again is this. When we approach and address the next issue that's on our plate for tonight, which is to make a decision on which proposal to go with for extremely temporary placement of people who are homeless right now. When we, I mean, because at this rate that we just went through $10,000, if the, the allocation is for $50,000, I mean, you just did that other math real quick. We're going to go through $50,000 in a matter of 30 days. At the rate we just went through $10,000, we're going to go through $50,000 in a matter of 30 days. And I, I know there's a lot of questions floating around and a lot of comments about whether it is the place of city government to deal with or work inside this space of, of homelessness. But I would implore you that it is absolutely our responsibility to make sure that we are doing everything and anything that we can to secure the safety and security of the citizens that live in this city. And do what we can to make sure we secure their health and safety and well-being of those individuals. And to, in my opinion, most importantly, those who are the least of the. So what I'm concerned about is this. We've been having this same conversation for almost three months now. And I don't think it's going to get any easier. I don't think that the decisions are going to get any easier. I think that it has been simplified as much as possible. This is not a purchase. It is a $1 lease for 90 days. That would give us something more long-term. I don't, I, again, I think that Pallet did a phenomenal job at presenting their product. I don't proclaim the work for Pallet, but I do know that for the cost, that includes them to come out and put the pallets where we need them at. I think the only additional thing that we would be looking at is figuring out how to get power to it. And if we're going to lease the building, that gives us a source for power. I don't know how much more information we need on a decision like this we would need. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that when the proposal was a little bit different on the table, I didn't hear near as many questions or concerns about blindly purchasing TA Wilson in the previous two meetings that I've heard tonight, after I brought those concerns up at the last meeting. Right? But to me, what makes the most sense is for us to take action and do something. We got to do something. With that being said, if all hearts and minds are clear, we have a motion.
I have one question of you, if you don't mind, yeah. Is your thought process that if we had a warming place at TA Wilson, that we wouldn't need the motels?
So I'm not, I'm not going to say that because I'm not sure what it would look like. I know that we would be out of the motel business. There are organizations that existed prior to us that were already helping people in that space and in that way. And I think there will continue to be that need until we have additional housing in general. But what I am saying is that would allow us to exit having to allocate emergency dollars for that purpose. And it would prepare us for next season if something more long-term does not come about. Because now we have the pallet shelters. Even if TA Wilson was not, and this is the thing about TA Wilson, you guys know how long that building been sitting for, right? And I think for JPS, their option is this, find a suitable entity in this community who can do something positive with it or to tear it down. That's what they're looking at. I don't think they really care if we do a temporary use and it's going to help people get out of the cold and keep them from dying on the streets. I don't think they would care if we come back in 90 days and say, you know what? We've had the opportunity to do our due diligence. We can't put the right pieces together to make this work. We're not going to be able to make it happen, unfortunately. I, I don't see that happening, especially if we continue with the diligence that we've had over the last three months of meetings. I don't see that happening. But I also see that, like, we, we have to do something. We have to do something.
When's our next meeting, though?
January.
I believe it's January the 10th.
Okay, so like two, three weeks, two weeks? And I mean, will we have more information?
Two, three weeks means this, Councilman Gunn, Councilmember Gunn. Two, three weeks adds two or three weeks in addition to if we do come back and we say yes. Right? From implementation. And, and again, if, and, and this is, this is where, again, remember I said, I got a little bit upset with Jonathan. Because had we just had the single solution, right, not that it was the fix, but the, the most immediate solution that I could find that I presented to him, which was the pallets, right? We are three months down the line from that initial discussion. Those pallets would be on the streets right now somewhere. People would be warm in them right now somewhere. That is the reason why I continue to push for them. Because again, it's going to take maybe, and I think these they have in stock. And probably, I don't know what their timeline looks like on actually being able to come out and put them down. But I know from the initial conversation, they said, we've got over 200 of these in stock right now. We could have those to you in a matter of two weeks. You got a site for us to put them at? Give us two weeks, we'll make arrangements to send a guy out there to fully install them. Takes our guys 45 minutes to put each one up. Boom, it's done. That was three months ago, right? If we had that single item to look at, evaluate, yes, we want to go with this, no, we don't. If we would have said yes, these would be on the ground. If we would have said yes, these would be on the ground right now. However, we did exactly what we're looking at trying to do right now, which is let's just wait. Let's wait and kind of, and I think that wait is not for more information, but to see if something different will happen. And nothing different's happened over the last three months, except for people have died. Over the last three weeks, people have died. To me, this is not an investment in infrastructure. It's not an investment in a building. It is an investment in saving people. These are people that we are talking about. To me, it's priceless. To be, if it saves one person to take action, it's more than worth it for me. It's more than worth it, no matter what the cost is, to save one person. And again, to me, it's a little bit more personal because these are individuals who know me. It's different when they know you, not just see you and know, and I ain't talking about they know me as mayor. They know me as, I know you Katrina Sun. Let me tell you about what I'm experiencing. And maybe you can do something and help. It hits a little bit differently when you know intimately this population of people who are suffering. And I think we owe it to make a decision. I don't care whether, and I, well, I can't say I don't care. It is your right as an elected official to vote however you want to vote. But I think we have an opportunity to do something different. No, this ain't what every community is doing. But every community is still plagued with the same issue that we are facing right now, homelessness. And they continue to make the same decisions and have the same outcomes year over year over year and hope that something happens differently. And I think these folks decide, I think these folks deserve to have more than just hope. I think they need us to take action. And that's what I'm asking for right now. And then we have an interim plan that will get them out of the cold for at least the time that it would take to get this implemented. Then we can take our time, have more in-depth conversations, invite more people to the table, invite whoever to the table that's willing to come to the table to make that longer-term decision if it is necessary at that point. And it gives us more time. And gives us a future option on if we're faced with this problem again.
So if in Phase One, environmental reporting and looking at things like the roof, the foundation, the boil or the windows, it becomes something that we don't want to invest in, where would those pallets go?
I think we would have a lot of options to look at from that point. And again, that would be a decision for us to make. I mean, that wasn't the first place that we looked at in the first place. I mean, if you look at their site, most of the sites that you see in the 100 other communities that they have across the United States, those pallets are in parking lots. I think we know it's seas of parking lots in our community that due to COVID and the lack of people working right now, that are just sitting empty right now, vacant. There are plenty of parks that are very, very underutilized that we could figure out where a better, more suitable place is for them to go. And say we decide none of those are our option, but we get through this winter time and we get into the spring, guess what? We can collapse them bad boys, spray them down, put them up in case we need them at a future date. Those are, like, that is the beauty of having something that is prefabricated to just be put together, almost like Legos, but still be able to provide the warmth and a heater inside this little facility and all the things that they would need, a bed, space for their belongings. Like, we had a firsthand account from someone that said, in my two-year homelessness experience, the most important thing that I had was what I had, my belongings, and being able to have somewhere for those belongings. So I think this is, you know, I just, I think it's a, I think it's a good option. But I think that, of course, there are going to be some unanswered questions. But I think that we've made decisions in the past and still had some unanswered questions. Not to be sure, but that's what, that's what our staff get paid the real money to help bring back to us is the additional questions that we have.
But the biggest concern I have is who's going to run it? Has anybody from Continuum of Care or any other organization stepped up and said, I've heard you talking about the pallets, I've heard you talking about TA Wilson, I've heard you talking that you need a warming shelter? Has any, and the proposals that we have this round don't have the warming shelter as an option at all. So who's going to run it? We don't have the ability to run it. We don't. We don't have the, we are not counselors or psychologists or the most capable person sitting at this table of running it is Angelita, and I'm guessing her plate is full.
I totally agree, but to answer the question directly, I've spoken to several people about the concept and about the idea and several people who currently work in the space. And all of them think it is a great idea, but I don't think you get an answer on who would run it until you do exactly what we did with what we're looking at making a decision on right now, which is until you put a request for proposal out there, we don't know who's capable or who's interested in doing what.
Well, we did a request for proposal just now and
Not for, not for this, we didn't.
Well, but
We didn't specific for just hotels and administration of hotels.
Well, I thought it was specific to the last one and
No.
Is that why no one came in with a warming shelter?
That's right.
We didn't ask for a proposal at all at the last meeting.
Well, I'm, but I'm just saying that we've been talking about this for three or four months, whatever it is. And even with the Continuum of Care's proposal that they gave last time, none of those options were on there, you know? And it's, and my question was what could, I mean, what do we, what would help with this problem? And everybody I've talked to is that person from the, you know, sleeping bag all the way up to the person who just needs a house for a night because they just got evicted or whatever that might look like. So
I understand.
I think it is an amazing opportunity.
I totally understand. I think at this point, we are saying the same things over again.
I just want someone to step up and say, if you can do that part, we will make sure they're clean, we'll make sure the counselors are there. Because from the last, from the warming shelter one that we got a proposal was, it was $90,000 and that was for a little bit of food and staffing. And so we get this building and you have a warming shelter, you now have another $90,000 roughly, give or take, that you've got to put into it, to the staffing part and the food. So it is not just that building and I just don't think, although it's great, I think if we can help with the motels right now, we can dig into this and we can put a deadline that we need answers so we can move forward. And we can put a contingency into the purchase agreement that's contingent on us not running the thing or whatever it is. Matt knows how to do that.
So I think that at this point, unless there's additional comments from other council people, I think we should just allow clerk to tally and display the vote. Okay, item passes four to three to move forward.
Can I make another motion?
Is it pertaining to the three proposals that we still need to entertain?
It's pertaining to what just passed. Just taking it to another, to the next step so that we can be successful, regardless of what any of us think here, hopefully.
If your heart desires.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that staff to coordinate a couple of dates available for council and members of the agencies that work with homelessness so that they can pre, so that we can all preview the property of TA Wilson. And then to ask for proposals for an overall plan or have a strategic plan to develop a master plan to address homelessness.
I'll support just for the discussion.
Okay, we can have you start discussion.
I guess I'm trying to understand what master plan you trying, we wanted, trying to figure out with the master plan. I'm trying to understand what you mean by master plan.
Master plan would be if you've got, in that particular area, we've got a lot of missing teeth. We've got a lot of vacant land. We've got a lot of landlords in the area. We have the homeless shelter in the area. We now have TA Wilson that we'll be utilizing for this purpose, hopefully. We're going to add pallets to the neighborhood. So a master plan in my mind is a long-term plan that says we're going to get from this way to this way in the next 10 years. And what are our goals? What do we want to see for our community? Whether it's, I see it in that particular neighborhood because I think it's a great opportunity to improve that neighborhood and give a lot of people a lot of opportunities. But we can't get there in 10 years if we don't have something in writing and what we visualize that. And we can't do that on our own. We need the experts at the table that tells us what we need. And that plan may be every December, somebody has to come to the table with some money for sleeping bags and tents because that person's not going to even go on a pallet. And people can come to us and say, this is how we can utilize that facility and this is how we can, we can see some multi-units being built in that area. And so that means the staff needs to go out and try and recruit developers to do that. So it's just an over, it's the start of a long-term solution. And the COC has probably talked about it a billion times without us at the table. Well, we've been at the table. I know Shane and Michelle go, so we've been at the table. And I'd like to see the building and I'm sure the people who we want to help us with that need to see the building and the area.
Yeah. We will go council, swing back around. I see you, Will, it's turning. So we'll swing back around to you, Mr. La Cour, I promise. Council members, what additional comments? Can we do, just do one full round, Robin first, and then Mr. Dancy, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Gunn.
Yeah, I like the idea of touring the facility and inviting other people to be a part of that. I mean, do we need a motion to do that? That was one question.
She just did.
So, okay, but I mean, do we need that? Is it necessary? Is what I'm asking. So that's part of it. And then I get the idea of the master plan. I don't know if those two things should be together. I think we should separate them. And then think about all the other kind of things that are happening too around housing and homelessness because I think it's, it fits somewhere.
Vice Mayor.
You didn't have anything?
I'm coming back. He started this.
Okay. I don't really want anyone to think that I'm not interested in taking care of our homeless. I did vote no, but I voted no because I don't have numbers. I don't know what it's going to cost. I know it's 150.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, I just want to call point order. Do you have any comments on the motion that's on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No.
Okay. Councilmember Will.
Can you repeat the motion?
Would you like me to repeat?
Madam Clerk, or, I think Madam Clerk has it.
The motion is to have staff coordinate council and agencies that work with the homeless to preview TA Wilson and develop a master plan to address homelessness.
Or to ask, well, it also, it's, I said, ask for proposals for an overall plan or have a strategic plan to develop a master plan. So, and/or.
I don't necessarily know like what you're driving at, but I feel like, you know, we can't, we can't direct the COC or REO to do anything.
True.
So
So no one may come to the meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll know that we shouldn't move, then we, then we know we shouldn't move forward. Right. But then we know we shouldn't move forward with that, with TA Wilson because nobody will be there to take, take it over. So.
Councilmember Keeran.
No comments from me.
Mr. La Cour.
Thank you, Mayor. The area which Councilwoman Schlechte has asked for a master plan, there's currently a choice neighborhood grant that we're involved in right now with Jackson Housing Commission. It's very deep and it really is specific to that area. So I think becoming more aware of that choice neighborhood, the potential for that, I think should be included in this whole discussion.
Yeah, you're right.
I understand your point. I don't think there's a, there was a motion, but staff can do that, what you're asking for, without having official action on this.
Can staff do that if we vote no?
Good question, Parliamentarian.
Question for you right quick, Laura. Would you entertain just an amendment to your motion to take off the request for a tour? Because that's something that we can just ask staff to
Yeah, I just don't want it to get dropped and I want it done sooner than later.
Understood.
Yeah, I just
But with that, or can we separate those two motions? I think that's
You can separate them. That's fine, too. I don't care.
So let's take this as two motions.
Yeah.
Starting with just directing staff to coordinate not only with council but with also providers, opportunity for a tour of the building. Right? Are there any questions to that motion? Okay, seen or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay. So then that brings us to the next motion that's on the table, which is the request for a master plan to be put together and proposals
Or
Or proposals to move forward on the building. Any additional discussion on that particular?
Well, it's not just the building. It's the overall, like Shane's talking about choice neighborhoods and it's the overall area.
So this kind of sounds like something, a particular commission that we have, the Affordable Housing Commission may be able to
Spearhead that.
And it kind of sounds like with what they're already doing and I, and I guess I don't know the scope of or the depth that they have explored homelessness as a part of what they're doing. So I think that might be a question that we should direct to the Affordable Housing Commission to find out or have a report back on, maybe have further discussion at our January meeting, because I think their meeting is at first Tuesday of the, of the month. And then we'll have a meeting right, right after that, that we could possibly ask for some feedback from them, where they are in that space and also on the choice, choice neighborhood grant that's being worked on as well. Any, any other discussion? I mean, there's still a motion on the floor that we have to make a decision on. So is there any other discussion on that motion?
Yeah, so I'm, now I'm unclear about what the motion, the second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you clarify the motion for us, please?
So as I understand it, is to invite agencies to offer proposals on addressing homelessness in the city or to come up with a master plan to address homelessness in the city.
Yes, and including the TA Wilson and the pallet situation, so. I mean, if we move forward, if we're buying pallets
It's very convoluted right now.
Well, I just, just an overall plan, yes, for what we're addressing tonight. Let's nip it in the bud as best we can and then, just like we do any other master plan, we look at it and try and evaluate it after periods of time to see where it needs to be adjusted. I mean, that's what we did with the five houses. That was Derek Dobie's, I think, reign that said, let's take these five houses and make them transitional and we've had to adjust because of the economy.
I almost feel like that's still should be two separate motions. Uh, I think, it, because unless I'm confused, because in, like, if that, if that moves, then we still have to wait on figuring out exactly what we're doing in the meantime.
If what moves?
Uh, that motion, because it includes pallets and the current use that we're proposing, right?
Well, we don't have, other than you know what to do with pallets, you know what to do with pallets, you don't, we don't really.
Is that, is that what you're, is that what you're saying though?
Yeah, we, we need an overall proposal and how this facility and what we're putting in place tonight, what we already agreed on, what passed, how that's gonna fall into the homeless, the, the solution for homelessness and it should fall within an overall master plan or proposal from an agency that specializes in homelessness.
It sound different than what you just said before.
I said it a little more eloquently, don't you think?
Yeah.
It flowed a little better. You know, sometimes these motions get in your head and until you get them out and talk about them. But we have a building that we need to know what to do with it. And hopefully, it, long-term.
Long-term you're talking about, right? Okay.
I don't wanna have this conversation in this depth next year.
Okay.
So this is to, to start addressing it as a long-term solution and utilizing what the city's providing.
Is, is everybody clear on the motion or is anybody clear on the motion?
So yes, if we approve it, no means we don't.
Did you wear a mask in council?
Correct.
In, uh. It's a master plan, right?
Council class.
Yeah.
Okay, clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, uh, fails four to three. Um. Um. I do think that we need a RFP, um, for, uh, ideas or like the next step on the most immediate approval of moving forward with, uh, the recommendation of city manager. And, uh, recommendation on whether ordinance or resolution would be the best route to go in regards to making sure that we're not violating any ordinances. That's for the immediate use. I'll make it a motion.
To proceed with the pallets is what you're saying?
Correct, to proceed with the current proposal that we just approved.
Proposal that we just approved, yeah.
I'll support it. So does that have to go to the planning commission? Just so you know, the timing, planning commission, then council, uh, for first reading, second, council second reading and then it goes into effect thirty days after that?
Um, if it's an ordinance, um, I don't think that's the route it would have to take if it is a resolution on temporary emergency housing. And it's, well, temporary emergency shelter. But I would, I would defer for clarification on, and I guess that's maybe what the request is, is for council to, to, to direct staff to come back on a clear path for us to execute this, uh, currently approved, uh, idea as quickly as possible. I think that would be, I'll amend the motion to that, to just be to direct staff to come back with a, a clear-cut path on how to execute it in the fastest possible route.
Would that include, um, if it needs to go to, if they determine what needs to be done and part of that has to go to planning commission first?
It would be all-inclusive of whatever the fastest route is that staff develops for us to entertain at our next January meeting. Any other questions on the motion?
No.
This motion is to, eh, find the quickest possible route to erect pallet shelters at the TA Wilson School.
Yes, and implement use of the annexed building, building as well, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, um. All minds clear on this part, are we okay with moving forward to take a look at the proposals?
Yes.
Did you still want the RFP for TA Wilson?
Is that a motion?
Well, you, you mentioned it and then we kinda got sidetracked.
Yes.
Just making, making it clear there.
Are you?
I'll make a motion that we requested an RFP for services for the use of the TA Wilson building and property.
Okay.
I support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
All right, thank you, council member Karen. Um, and I think that brings us to, uh, hopefully what our last item is for discussion, uh, which is the immediate, um, remedies that we have to look at. And again, what I think that we should do is just allow, um, each entity to come up. I would just ask for like whatever questions council would have under proposal. Um, and we will just take them in the order they were provided, um.
So they're not doing a presentation, they're just coming up and we can ask questions?
If, I, I think maybe, uh, light overview, um, let's like put a time limit on overview with three minutes be enough for overview and then allow council to ask questions from that point forward. Okay, so we'll start with, uh, uh, Community Action Agency.
Guys, keeping me up past my bedtime.
I'm sorry.
Two weeks in a row.
Sorry.
Thank you, um, Toby Berry from Community Action Agency. Um, we did respond to the request for proposals within the parameters, which is, uh, providing assistance, uh, only through January first to March thirty-first to provide thirty days of hotels to twenty-five, um, households. And I think what's really important to stress is that, um, Mr. Mayor was correct in that this really is thirty days of assistance. So you currently have twenty-five households in hotel that have not found permanent housing options in the seven, nine, ten days they've been there. So our goal would be to carry those folks over, to have time for people to work with them in order to find permanent housing options. So that's included in our proposal, though we are currently trying to figure out the immediate need of what happens on Saturday, because they're out on Saturday. Um, we will do all of the things that we do as the housing assistance and resource agency, um, screening clients, um, prior to their stay to look for any adequate housing options. These are for people who are coming, who are, um, street homeless or, or homeless. Um, we'll provide them transportation to shelter. We are doing this in partnership with Jackson Housing Commission. So TJ has been very connected to the folks who are currently out there. We will, um, work with her over this time period to help those folks, uh, find permanent housing options. Um, we will, uh, coordinate exit from hotel if we can't find those housing options within the twenty-five days so that on day thirty, there's a plan. They'll all be added to the section eight waitlist. Um, I think that's the broad strokes there, questions.
Uh, council, what questions do we have for Community Action? Thank you, by the way. What questions we have? I, I think I saw, uh, council member Karen grab first for the microphone.
Uh, maybe.
Okay.
One, one question I have, so you have, I mean, I, obviously we have the dates of January first to March thirty-first and you mentioned, you know, this is basically gonna be a thirty-day fix. So am I correct in assuming that if we were to say January thir- first through March thirty-first, that this total number would be tripled?
Um, the total hotel costs, yes.
The hotel, yeah, right, okay. Thank you.
So that's really a hundred and twenty thousand instead of forty?
If we wanted to house them for ninety days, yeah. That's not what we asked for.
I just wanted to clarify because.
Thank you for clarifying.
January first to March thirty-first.
Right, but is it a different twenty-five households each month? Or is it, I mean, what's the requirements to stay even thirty days? I don't know.
The parameters that we were given was twenty-five families allotted thirty days of housing. And because you currently have twenty-five households in there, like, it's, they're there. So we have to, we wanna provide them the thirty days to get them to the other side, to permanent housing. So there would be no, potentially no additional people coming in. Then what's there now?
So this is fifty-five thousand times twelve, or times three, sorry. The whole thing times three, not just the hotel?
I think it's just the hotel. So there's the potential that the staffing.
We're looking to the person. Okay, all right, just wanna make sure.
So is it plus eighty or is it double or triple?
Triple.
I think it would be times plus to eighty is.
So it's a hundred and twenty plus.
So the, the administration, five hundred and twenty hours, I didn't calculate that. It's forty hours.
For three months.
For three months.
Right.
So that'd be five hundred and twenty hours.
So the grand total's one seventy-five, eight twelve seventy-five.
One seventy-five?
One seventy-five, let's call it one seventy-six, just to be easy, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, to round it.
Well, that's what I don't understand, is that one seventy-five? I'm, I'm looking at one thirty-five because I was thinking that it's just the hotel cost would be times three.
Correct.
The, the.
Correct.
Salary, I guess, I could calculate it, but five hundred and twenty hours is two thousand.
Oh, yeah, you're right, one thirty, I added wrong, ah, one thirty-five, you're right.
Okay, all right, then.
I, I added the fifty-five to, never mind, it's one thirty-four, so it's one thirty-five rounded.
Council member Will, you got other questions?
Yeah, just a, um, just a couple, I think. Um, so obviously every situation is different for individuals and families and things, but, um, is twenty-five to thirty days enough time typically to find permanent stable housing for individuals or families or you typically need more time?
It's tough, yeah, it's tough. Um, I think we've seen success with our veterans in thirty days, but veterans are also a different population, right? Everybody loves a veteran, so.
Okay, um, my next question then is, you know, obviously what you presented to us is twenty-five households for thirty days because that's what we asked for, if we change that, to twenty-five households for ninety days, would you guys have the capacity to do that?
Yeah, yes, we would, yep.
Um, and then finally, the, my final question is, uh, the food line item?
Uh huh.
Five hundred dollars seems incredibly small. What is, what, what does that look like?
Um, well, part of what we would do is try and help people access mainstream benefits so that they could get food assistance if they're eligible. So then what we're doing is helping people shop rather than taking them food.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep.
I'll do, any other questions?
Yes, um, can you talk about vouchers? I know, uh, come on, girl, talk to me, honey. Can you talk about, is it hard? I, I seem like, um, I guess veterans is, I think it's easier, but, but what's hard about vouchers is hard to find, is the landlord, it's hard to find landlord to accept them or anyone else?
Yeah, it's hard to find available housing, right? We have, there's a limited time period when your name is pulled, so you have a limited time period to rent up. If you don't rent up in that time, then you, you lose your voucher and have to go back on the list. And so it's that, that trying to find affordable, adequate housing within that timeframe is the problem.
We don't have housing in the city?
We don't have affordable, available housing for the people looking for section eight.
Affordable, available housing.
Correct.
What's the timeframe, do you know?
Um, if you get a extension, you can go up to ninety days, ninety days, starts out thirty, sixty, ninety. And if you don't lease up within ninety, then.
I will say in my experience, when I've talked to people with section eight as a landlord, most of the people that we've talked to don't really know how much they get for section eight. And we end up having to call your, you know, whoever, whoever's handling the section eight. Jackie deals with that, so I just know that. She never believes what they say because it's never right. I find that interesting, I find that fascinating.
Yeah, it, it, it's a bureaucratic process.
Hmm. And would you just speak to the fact that you are a, funded by the government and therefore you have to pay a living wage and benefits and stuff like that? Could you just speak to that for?
Um, that is a, that is a decision as an organization that we made um, because we, uh, wanna live our value of equity. And so we, we have, um, promised that we will pay fifteen dollars an hour at a minimum for our staff. All of our staff have access to health insurance on the first day they start work. Um, and we also have a retirement plan so that when they retire, they do not become clients of Community Action Agency.
Thank you.
Last chance for Community Action Agency, any additional questions? Just wanna say thank you again, very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, okay, next proposal on the list is, uh, Mama Tutu's, uh, house, uh, proposal for homelessness hotel assistance. I don't see Mama Tutu, but is there anybody else here that can speak on behalf of the proposal? Don't see any, so we will move next to residents in action. Um, if you can just give us a brief overview, uh, in three minutes and then allow us, uh, some time to ask some questions about the proposal.
Tasha Carter. Um, I was here last week and, and we gave a, a presentation of what we did for homelessness project and kinda gave you a snapshot of what Residence in Action has done since the onset of COVID. Um, I am here to also stress today that as residents, we want to partner with agencies like Community Action Agency, we don't have the resources to place people in homes. What we do specialize in is, um, being boots on the ground to meet the needs however we can with, um, various populations, um, mostly those who have experienced inequity historically. Um, focus a lot on, on the black population and also those who are living in poverty. So we are boots on the ground and we fill the gaps, um, of what the agencies and organizations are missing um, in addition to helping those who are on the fringes of, of eligibility. We tap into their resources, um, whenever we can to help, um, make sure that they are applying for the benefits that are available. But in the meantime, after six o'clock or after five o'clock and on the weekends and two in the morning, whatever, we're, we're answering the phones and we're providing the resources that we have, you know, residents even, um, take out of their own pockets to help, um, other residents. So what we, um, submitted was a, a pretty, a, a comprehensive plan of what the residents are doing, um, boots on the ground, identifying, um, the people who need help and, um, paying the people who help them. Uh, if you look at the budget, uh, the primary, but I felt like we were somewhat limited, well, one, twenty-three families, that, I mean, that's, that's, I, I think Corey, when he was up here, he explained that there, you know, you help, um, families and then there's another forty who, I think you said forty, on the, that are on a waiting list. So what we submitted not only helped, um, the people that would be lodged in providing the support services that they need to connect to the, the agencies and, and communities for their benefits, but also everyone else, um, above those twenty-three families who are still gonna be on the street. So what we submitted not only helped, um, the people that would be lodged, and providing the support services that they need to connect to the, the agencies and, and communities for their benefits, but also everyone else, um, above those twenty-three families, who are still going to be on the streets, um, or wherever, homeless, um, in supporting them, um, for food and warming supplies and, and whatnot.
Okay, council, what questions do we have? Let's go round robin and start with councilmember Gunn.
So just to pick up on your last point, that's what that twenty thousand is for, is beyond the twenty-three families that are currently in hotels that were extending for another thirty days, it's to help people who are not going to be in hotels.
Yep.
So that's why that is such a high number.
It is, yeah, and that also, I mean, part of applying for benefits before you can even apply to the agencies and organizations. You have to have certain documentation. A lot of homeless people don't have, um, uh, Michigan IDs, they don't have birth certificates, they don't, you know, they don't have social security cards, so there's a lot of, one, even, even if they knew, or, or I won't say no, no, because of, I'm not going to say no, because that's not, that they don't know. Even if they, um, went to get their Michigan ID, or their, um, their, uh, or their Michigan ID, they don't, may not have the money to pay for the Michigan ID. I think it's like fifteen dollars, so we did build in legal fees, uh, to help support those processes.
That's, so can you explain to me the operational data lead, the performance advisor, what are their roles?
Okay, so how RIA works, we have a method to our madness. We, you have people who do the work, and then you have, um, people who lead the, the operation, so, you know, time cards, you know, any of the, the normal administration that any business or organization would need as we, um, have to, you know, pay the people for what they're doing. But also, as part of that process, we, um, meet, um, we, we need to develop a demographic form to know how we track the data. We have developed processes, so that it's a consistent process, it's a process improvement. As we, we learn our way forward, we document those processes, we document, um, lessons learned, and then you have, uh, we have a master certified data person. We have a, um, a, a national consultant, uh, who is also a, um, physician, who, uh, and who also has a, um, a master's degree in population health. So all of those, we leverage our skill sets, you know, all of the residents have, residents have different levels of skill sets. We leverage each other's skill sets, so that we can, um, provide quality reports, like the report that you, you saw with the homelessness report. So that's, uh, that's part of, we have our, uh, operational lead, we have a, a performance improvement person, and then you'll also see that bottom line, I'll probably get questions on that, with the, um, the back, the general backbone support.
And who provides that backbone support?
Residents.
Fiduciary, who's the fiduciary?
Oh, so, residents in action is not a, we're not a legal entity, we're in the process of becoming a nonprofit. We have utilized, um, various fiduciaries, um, and, you know, I have, um, gotten one confirmation from one and, um, two other potentials for, but we've used, um, Community Action Agency, we, we've used Save Our Youth, we've used, um, United Way, um, Family Services and Children's Aid. So, you know, when you, you do what you gotta do, wouldn't you?
Yeah, while you're still going through the process of the business. And then one final question, I just want to make sure, so the same question with CAA, if we're, if we looked at ninety days, so we're gonna say eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty times three, if we're doing three months.
For one difference in what we submitted, as residents, we don't have the leverage that the city does to secure rates. So our rate is, I think it's probably double or more than what the city has negotiated for, um, your hotel stays. So that if, if we can take, um, advantage of the city rate, then it would be less. But in answer to your question, yes, it would be more. And I guess, we put that in for budgetary reasons, we would like the flexibility of knowing that, you know, you might get one person in, and they only need to stay seven days. And so then, you know, they haven't utilized the rest of those days. So from a budgetary perspective, we understand budgeting that way, but the reality of people actually using that whole amount, every single person, they may, or they may not, so we just want that flexibility.
Okay, that's it, those are my questions.
Mr. Dancy.
Yes, um, just like, uh, CAA was talking about, I know everything ends the twenty-fourth, so, uh, when would this going, does this going to fake? And they're trying to fake what they're going to do Christmas until January the first, is that calculated into that too? I guess I missed, did I miss it?
So what, what was, the RFP was from January to March, so, no, that from, if, there's going to be a cliff if there aren't additional funds, um, for the people who are already housed. And again, I'm advocating for multiple strategies here, because as residents, we need the, we need the agencies, I mean, like, Community Action, Agency and Jackson Housing, they're in a position to help us put people in, uh, longer term, um, permanent housing. Residents don't have the ability to do that, but we, we're boots on the ground, and we're working around the clock to help people.
Vice Mayor.
Angelita, and asked most of my questions, um, but, um, just to confirm, uh, Tasha, the remaining, uh, budget items are based on, uh, on like for a ninety-day period? Say, for example, the, the support specialists, is that the, the total for ninety days of service?
I would say no for that, because I, what, how we budgeted, we, we're not limiting to just one person, so we have hours for a full-time person during the, um, the week, and then four hours, or, or four hours dedicated to the, the weekends, because we work weekends. Um, and it was budgeted in a way where we could leverage, um, three to four people, um, spending so many hours a week, so I would say no. And, and we, or, this is for the three months. Thirteen weeks, so I guess that answers yes. Yeah, so that is what we, we budgeted for thirteen weeks.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Sorry.
But we do need to, uh, add, or the eighty-six is times three for, uh.
Yeah, unless we can take advantage of that city rate.
Okay, well, the rest was asked, so I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Will. Councilmember Karen.
I think my only question is going to be, I don't know if my question is necessarily geared towards Tasha, it might be geared towards, um, our mayor and our staff, but we do have that gap between, you know, essentially Christmas and January first. So what are we doing in that gap? Is that something that we can essentially just either say that this is actually going to be like December twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, whatever, until, you know, maybe not necessarily March thirty-first, or just extend it to March thirty-first? Just because we've got that little bit of a couple-day gap in there?
I was just doing some math and math to fill in that gap.
I've, I've got a comment, um, but I would like to wait, but I think once I make my comment, it'll help.
Okay, cool.
Answer my perspective on that question, at least, I hope.
Then all of my other questions, literally Angelita asked all my questions, so I'm all set.
Okay.
Just some simple questions, how big's your organization?
We have, um, eighteen core people. And then we, we, so, I'll, let me clarify that, so we have eighteen core people who are considered Residents in Action members, but when we do projects, we like subcontract to people. So like, um, Young People of Purpose, Diane Washington is, is a member, for her gardening, we have projects that, um, are focused on gardening. She has volunteers, and so like, people within her organization also work on projects, and then partial to girls, uh, Selena Taylor is part, but she has a ton of volunteers, and so they are the ones who lead with, who, they're allocated certain hours, and then they are the ones who, um, like, have different people work the project, different residents in the community.
Okay, and then, um, you work for Community Action Agency, right?
I do not.
Oh, you don't work for them?
I work for myself. No, I, I worked for the house system for twenty-four years, and I recently broke away, and so.
Okay, all right, well, then that question, it answered. And then, uh, food and food cards, would, does that triple? Hundred dollars per week, or is that for the thirteen weeks?
I would, no, because I calculated that, um, but, so what I did was, uh, for those that are lodged, we averaged about a hundred dollars a week per unique family, uh, for the thirteen weeks. And then we added about ten thousand dollars for other homeless people who may need assistance, so they averaged out to like a thousand, like, per se, uh, one thousand, ten dollar, um, food cards.
Got it. All right, I think I'm good.
Okay, so you said you're good, right? Okay, so, um, a couple of questions, uh, for you, Tasha, that I had, um, one was answered already, which is, uh, how long it would take, uh, for implementation to begin? And I think you said that this was written based on the request being for January. Okay. I have other questions written somewhere else. So I, I do think, and your, uh, your three-minute synopsis answered most of my other questions. One of those questions was, uh, in reference to the hotel costs, and how was that cost derived? And I, I will say, I think that, uh, the, the key word that you, that you said from the get-go is partnering, uh, with the city, and I think that the city would definitely be willing to help negotiate rates, uh, the same as any other organization would be able to, uh, utilize or leverage that same rate negotiation. And, and to me, that, what that, what that does is that, uh, that provides, uh, opportunity for, for you to serve more people, um, as well with the budget that you requested. I did have, uh, I had a, a, a brief conversation with, and this is just for, for council's information, uh, I had a brief council, conversation with, um, the city manager, um, on the different options that we were looking at, um, and one of the comments that he made, uh, because I think that the other two proposals are, are very straightforward, and we are very appreciative of all the proposals that have been put forth, including yours. One of the things that, that I agree with that he mentioned, because I'll be honest, I, I had that conversation prior to having the opportunity to read any of these, uh, because I've worked all day. So with that, once I have looked at it, one of the comments that he made was about this being a fully comprehensive, while, uh, it is a higher ask, I think that now that we're really looking at apples to apples, and saying that realistically, to stretch it, there's additional funding that will be needed, which is kind of already built into this, the thought of helping the additional people, uh, and the ability to be able to leverage the city's rates, uh, allows for more people to be served. As well as, I think that, um, there's a possibility that the city of Jackson could serve as the fiduciary, I think that's a, a realistic possibility. Not just pulling that out the hat, that was again, another comment that was made by our city manager, that we think that we could probably, we could manage that portion. With that being said, here's the challenge. If granted the proposal under that understanding, um, would you be able to pull RIA together to fill the gap? Because I'm telling you, my heart is just, like, I'm trying to not like tear up right now, Tasha, because like, I don't want to see anybody homeless during Christmas, because I know what that feels like.
When you, when you say fill the gap, you mean between, that for the end of the year?
Gets done, happens s- starting prior to the twenty-fourth, because that is the date that individuals have to leave, is the twenty-fourth. And I think that is the biggest concern that I have, is I don't want to see people, even if it just extends it for another thirty days, uh, what I don't want to see is when people are already down and out, for there to be anybody's family put out literally Christmas Eve, uh, that, even if it's only for a few days that they get put out, uh, I, uh, I, I would not even be able to sleep on that. So that would be, that would be my biggest question, uh, is those few things pending and or like looked at, consideration of being able to utilize the city's rate that we currently have, uh, would that allow you space and time to be able to fill that gap to make sure that they don't have to leave at that time?
Yeah, I, what I will say is, the people who are boots on the ground are doing it now, they're just not resourced, so, I, that, I, I think that would be a yes.
Council, is there any other questions for Tasha?
You said they will serve more people?
So, uh, from, from what I'm looking at, I think it provides the opportunity for more people to be served, uh, because she, she budgeted a higher rate, but we could negotiate the same rate that we're getting right now, which would allow room for additional people to be served with the, wrapping in that, uh, the additional request for funding. And that, that line items are, uh, numbered, but clothing and warming supplies, basic supplies, that was in reference to the additional people, uh, that would not be ho- housed, and I, I, I think that those numbers together allow for more people to be served overall.
Okay, I'm kind of confused on that, but it's twenty-five households and, uh, Community Action Agency's proposal for forty, and her, her, um, proposal says twenty-three.
And, but the rate, the rate is different, so if you back the numbers, I'm sorry, I was, councilmember Will.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, um, I just want to at least clarify this for, for council, for, for vice mayor, that if you back the numbers out, the room rate on the, on the, thank you, and I think that, does that answer all your questions for, for Tasha? Uh, the room rate, if you back the numbers out, is fifty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, which is roughly what we're paying right now, and that's the rate that we've negotiated through our offices right now, right? That's about the rough rate that we are paying right now. If we negotiated those same rates, and Tasha's proposal, the rates covers that ninety days? Do you see what I'm saying? Because her room rate, rate is one twenty-five.
I thought she said that that was going to be multiplied by three in order to cover them for three months.
Yeah.
My understanding.
No, she did, if you do the math, but, but you said, or somebody said, because our rate, no, she said, because our rates are cheaper with what we negotiated, she could, I mean, basically, it's two months, the eighty-something works out to roughly two months, but if she had to pay one twenty-five, she'd have to triple it. Okay.
Councilmember Will.
If it pleases everybody, I'd like to make a motion, and then if it's seconded, I can explain where the numbers are coming from, um, after speaking with both, both parties that are here tonight, but, um, I'm ready, you ready? I'd like to move to allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Community Action Agency and the Jackson Housing Commission to provide at least twenty-five households' hotel rooms for up to ninety-eight days, beginning December twenty-fourth, and I would like to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars to Residents in Action to provide clothing and warming supplies, basic needs, housing supplies, COVID needs, and trans- basic needs, housing supplies, COVID needs, and transportation, for a total allocation of $175,000 to be taken out of ARPA funds previously allocated for transitional housing.
I'll second that. Can I make one adjustment, though? Or propose one adjustment and you can yea or nay, that it starts December 21st and so December 24th?
Yeah, there's enough cushion on there that, that should be able to work. So, is that a support? I can go over how that, I got to those numbers and make sure that it's accurate with everybody here. So Community Action Agency's proposal, if you extrapolated it out for 90 days, it came to $134,812. If you added eight days, or in this case, 10 days, but if you added eight days to get to December 24th, it would be an extra, and that comes to about $1,500 a day. If you added those seven or eight days, you're looking at about $10,500. If you add those two numbers together, it's $145,298. I added $5,000 for cushion. And then the $25,000, Rhea asked for 20, and I added $5,000 to make it a nice round 175.
I, I would prefer us to go with either or, one, one or the other, on the proposal personally. Because I think that while putting them together provides like the comprehensive wraparound services that Rhea suggested, but it's still the same bottom number to take care of everything else that was recommended. It's the, it's literally, it's the same number. I mean, if you, if you back out the fiduciary costs, the, we'd actually save a few bucks. It'd be 172,800 without the, without the fiduciary costs added in there. I think we should entertain one proposal or the other. If we want to wrap around services, I feel like we would have to give Residents in Action the opportunity to decide if that's the portion of the work that they would be willing to commit to for the cost. I think that.
I'll amend the motion to say if those organizations will accept it.
I like the proposal that Will came up with because it gives each organization the opportunity to do what they're really good at doing. My biggest concern with Residents in Action is they are not a 501(c)(3) and they will have to subcontract that out. And this is a, this chunk of money. Community Action Agency does this day in and day out with finding housing. It's right up their alley and I, I appreciate all the work that the community, the Residents in Action do. And I think the proposal that, that Will came up with hits a lot of stuff that they've got the expertise on.
That's, any other comments from council?
No, not that for me.
East side, I see you, I seen you, I seen the reach. My, no, Vice President? Vice Mayor? I'm getting sleepy, I'm getting sleepy.
You know, the, the 501(c)(3) stuck out to me, of course, when I was reading over the proposal. But I'm not sure if they want to do this with, I don't know how they decide who. So it's kind of uncomfortable, but I understand both sides. So I just, another one of those tough things we have to decide.
Note for Jonathan to take, no more sick days, sir, because this would have been a great time for you to chime in on the conversation that we had. So again, I, I would, the first thing that I would say is I'm, I'm not concerned about the 501(c)(3) status because it doesn't take a 501(c)(3) to do good work. I think to date, from my understanding, at the last presentation that was provided by Residents in Action, to date, they have managed to, uh, managed pretty close to $2 million to date. Like, I'm, I don't question the integrity, especially if the option is that the city would be the fiduciary. I think that would actually allow us better control of how money flows, where it goes to, how it's allocated, what it goes to, what, what happens with it from that aspect. And again, I, I, from a conversation that I had, that was something that Jonathan said, look, we could take care of that. And it was, it was pretty apparent to me, uh, from our conversation, which direction he thought was more comprehensive of a solution. And after reading the two recommendations, it is very apparent to me personally, which solution is all encompassing of what, not just the immediate need in managing, like getting people in and out of hotels, but the long-term management of helping with the supportive services that the individuals would need as well. I also have concerns about like the ability to do all of that and feed people on a $500 food budget over 90 days. I think that's, I mean, I got, I got five kids at home. They eat up $500 themselves in about 15 days. Growing like weeds, but nonetheless, that's, food is expensive right now. That's a, it's a pretty low estimate, estimate of, of food services. But I think that we should evaluate the proposals based on what was provided to us in the proposals. That's just my personal opinion.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor? Are they willing to allow us, I mean, we would be able to be the fiduciary? Or do they get to choose who they want?
I, I think it would be an agreement, of course, I don't think, but they have to have a fiduciary.
Yeah, no, they have to, but are they willing to have us as that fiduciary?
I, I don't want to speak on behalf of them. I would allow Tasha to answer that question in this particular case.
I mean, would that be what we would be approving based on us being that fiduciary? And then the rate they're getting the $53?
If the motion was proposed that way, then that, I think would probably be the direction that would be suitable.
And the reason why I asked about the 501(c)(3), I mean, I've, I've been a part of organizations that relate to 501(c)(3), like the NAACP, they're 501(c)(4). But I didn't know if that was any requirement with the ARPA funds of who we're working with. If they had to have it, I'm not questioning them and their ability. It was the fact that if we choose them, will, are, are the ARPA funds allowed to be? And, and maybe the fiduciary takes that, takes that place. And I'm not trying to stop anything, but you know, that, that's where my mind went. It's like, okay, because it's federal funds, will they require them, themselves to be 501(c)(3)? I don't know, because I, I haven't really looked into that part of it. That's it, that's, you know. I don't know if I addressed the questions to her, or if we had just approved it the way you suggested with those stipulations in it.
In the, in the terms of the motion.
Okay.
Shane looks like he wants to say something.
I know, I was going to say, maybe someone wants to address my.
Something that you want to add?
I will say that the work that we do administratively in-house is billed to whatever account we're receiving that money. So if we are doing an admin responsibility and the city's side, that's going to be billed to whatever that account is for us doing the work. So staff, if one person from community development, Shay Shannon, for instance, is handling something on the fiduciary side, her hourly rate will be billed to the ARPA funds.
Which is no different than any, any other funds that the city manages. Right, everybody understands that, right?
But that's, that's the, I think that's what she intended, the 15%, the $25,000, 920.
I think it might actually come out on the better side of that.
Huh?
I said, I think ultimately, we'd probably come out on the better side of that, even paying staff at their whatever.
Well, yeah, I don't know, I'm just saying, I think she has it in the, the budget. I have a couple of comments, if I may. Last week, Continuum of Care came up with this proposal and because we didn't do an RFP, it didn't really get looked at, just to summarize, shorten it to the quick. So we put out an RFP and, um, and I thought this was pretty detailed. And Community Action Agency responded to the RFP as requested. However, now we're looking at something that is more extensive than the RFP. And how do we know that Community Action Agency or Mama Tutu couldn't do it for less or more involved? So I think now we're, we're not giving the other organization to provide as extensive of service as what, uh, what this particular proposal. And as far as the food comment goes, I appreciate the fact that Community Action Agency is encouraging other sources of revenue for that food, or ways to get that food, so that money, if we save money on the food because they can get vouchers or, or they can go to pantries, or however that might play out, then that saves us money that we can put towards more hotels and actually putting someone in a warm bed. So I don't think we're comparing apples to apples because two of the organizations weren't given the opportunity to include these things.
Any additional comments?
Do you want me to repeat the motion because there was a couple of changes to it?
Yeah.
Move to allocate $150,000 to Community Action Agency and the Jackson Housing Commission to provide at least 25 households hotel rooms for up to 100 days, beginning December 21st, and $25,000 to Residents in Action to provide clothing and warming supplies, basic needs, household supplies, COVID needs, and transportation, for a total allocation of $175,000 to be taken out of ARPA funds previously allocated for transitional housing, so long as these organizations accept under these specific conditions.
Any questions to the motion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, motion fails four to three. I would make a motion to accept the proposal submitted by Residents in Action with the contingency that they allow City of Jackson be fiduciary of the funds and that the city would help negotiate the room rates.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. And the motion passes six to one. I do believe that concludes all the business of our evening. Brings us down to city council member comments. And before we get there, we definitely want to say thank you to all the organizations sincerely for the proposals that were submitted. And we will move to council member comments and start with, let's start with Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know earlier, geez, we've been over so much tonight. Just wanted everyone to know, I support finding agencies to assist us. I voted no against the pallets and the school because I, I just need a little more information on costs and how much has to be fixed and all those things that go along with that. But it's, it's been approved and we will work for it. And hopefully, we will get information timely and immediately, like next month, we'll have more information to bring my comfort level to a point where I'm okay with what we want to do. But definitely, we need to take care of our homeless. And then, you know, the, the approval of the, um, RFPs here for the project for homeless, you know, I'm, I'm really hoping that, you know, some of these people can get, uh, into permanent housing sooner than later. You know, we have to do, we need to do, maybe there's units that people have that they're working on and get repaired so people can rent them, you know. And then, of course, we, we have some housing issues and I'm not sure where the total problem is, but it's a little bit of this and a little bit of that. But we need to try to get people permanent homes. That's what I'd like to see out of this. And the unshelter needs to be looked into as well, you know. I don't know how they balance it out, the boots on the ground and the backbones, no more than I when it comes to that, but I really want to see some of those people that we have lost or ones, so that we don't lose any more people to being homeless in the weather. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, Merry Christmas to everyone. Just want to say happy holidays to you and yours. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's go with Councilmember Bunnell.
Thank you. I kind of want to echo, you know, some of, some of Councilmember Robinson's comments. But I, I'm glad that we, you know, have finally made a lot of progress. We've, in the last two meetings that we've had, we've made a lot of progress on trying to help the homeless population that we have here in the city. Obviously, we don't have all the answers. I know with TA Wilson, there's still, still some gaps that need to be filled. But I know now that we've got, you know, we've put, put some skin in the game, hopefully, we'll see some more action from partners that we have within the community on some RFPs or some, you know, any kind of assistance that we'll get from our partners within the community. I think that has a lot of potential as a long-term solution. Other than that, again, with, to kind of echo Councilmember Robinson, you know, Merry Christmas to everybody. I know I'm really, also really glad that we did do a little bit of an extension for the hotel stays to kind of push it up to Christmas time, just because like Mayor Mahoney mentioned, I, I also don't want to see people being homeless on Christmas. Nobody, nobody, A, nobody deserves to be homeless, B, nobody deserves to be homeless on Christmas. Also, with, with the upcoming snowmageddon that's anticipated for this weekend, I would, I would like to hope that we don't have people out on the streets when we're supposed to get up to 15 inches of snow, if the weather is correct. Other than that, that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Schleck.
Well, I want to say thanks to the staff for all the work they've done on this and all the work all of the city staff has done in 2022, because there's been a lot going on. Michigan State Housing Development Authority has a. Um, Michigan State Housing Development Authority has a, um, they're seeking input to cultivate the outline and development of goals and topics that will support the involvement of persons with lived experiences in governance and/or advisory bodies at the agency, community, and state level. Um, so if anybody's interested, they want a submission by December twenty-seventh. And, uh, nominees will be nominated by January sixth, and there's an honorarium, fifty dollars per hour, that's being paid, and the time commitment is three, one to two hour meetings during the month of January and February. So timely request, and you can, uh, it looks like, uh, if someone's interested, just get ahold of me and I'll forward you the information if you don't have it. Um, 'cause I don't, I guess it says, uh, cut, email agreen@mihomeless.org. So Alison Green, it's A-Green, no E, at mihomeless.org, if you're interested in more information on that. I'm curious to know where we got this from, so I can thank them, 'cause I peeked in it, and it looked really good.
I stayed up all night slaving over the stove.
Oh, my goodness, I would've taken a bite except for I thought it might be rude.
It, it would've been an unfair situation if you did that prior to this meeting, and trust me.
And then, happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Angulita. Right, Big Will.
Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Uh, just wanna touch on one thing really quickly, I know it's late. Um, but over the last three months, I have gotten some comments from people about how, uh, messy these council meetings have been, uh, how ugly they've been, um, not in a, you know, attacking each other sense, but just a, um, you know, less formal, uh, more conversation aspect to it. And, and I'll say the same thing publicly that I say to all of them, it's, it's really a feature, not a bug. I mean, this is what a council looks like when we don't talk behind closed doors and make decisions behind closed doors and do everything transparently. This is really, you know, this, again, this is a feature, not a bug, and it's something frankly to be proud of. You know, it can get a little ridiculous sometimes, but if you watch any board or body that just blows through every vote, yes, no, up or down, without talking, that's, that's a group of people who are making decisions behind closed doors, full stop. So I'm, I'm proud to be a part of this group and, and do the things the way we do it.
East side. He say the best for last, baby, I understand. Uh, no, shh. So I'd just like to thank everyone, uh, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, all that good stuff. Um, don't have a lot to say, but I just wanna let it, remind everybody, just want everybody to know. Starting at nine fifteen, I got, I need to make my special announcement now, but starting at nine fifteen, you can go online and get digital trading cards from Freddie Dancy. You can get digital trading cards, you can get all the digital trading cards you need. Just start at nine fifteen, don't wait, just, you know, nine fifteen, wait and go and do it. All, everything you wanna see, all my images, I mean, everything you wanna see and you don't wanna see, you can get. So all you have to do, you don't go Freddie Dancy, you go to buttermanndigitaltradingcards dot poop, and that's what you do. Just go to buttermanndigitaltradingcards dot poop and get all the digital trading cards you need. You're gonna love it, it's great for Christmas, New Years, every day of the week. Thank you very much.
Freddie, how much are they?
You don't, you have to go and look and see.
Oh, man. Um, so, uh, again, um, just wanna, uh, bid a, uh, get well soon to our, uh, city manager and a thank you to staff for making sure that, um, things were seamless in his absence, um, except for a few areas where I know he would've chimed in on. Uh, but I appreciate you, uh, Mr. Laporte, for, for jumping in, Mr. Attorney, uh, and the rest of our staff for all the work, um, that you guys have done. Um, with this being the completion of my first year serving across the street, I will strongly, strongly dittle with what Councilmember Will Fordgrave said. It makes a huge difference in the way we operate, and I will tell you that from a firsthand account. Um, so I'm gonna start with something funny, I'm gonna go to something that's good, that we can celebrate, uh, then I'm gonna go to something that's sad, and then I'm gonna make a comment after that, and then I'll make my final comments. But I wanted to just set y'all up for where we gonna go, because it relates to the comment that I'm gonna make. So, um, usually when I get a bright idea, I text the city manager. And after being on Facebook yesterday, uh, uh, and the assumptions that come along with being mayor, I got a bright idea, so I text the city manager, and I told him, I said, I really think, um, we should consider purchasing the house on Fourth Street. And it was a long pause, y'all know what house I'm talking about, Laura know, the mansion on Fourth Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Laura knows, this, I think, there we go. There we go, it's up for sale right now, right? Um, I'm sure that, uh, Jonathan had the same exact look that you had on your face, right now. Um, so I waited, 'cause he didn't reply, usually he texts me right back. So I waited a good ten minutes, and then I just replied to him, I'm just joking, man. Um, the house is five hundred thousand, see, that's what I was thinking, right? You know, not for me, but for future mayors, but if I should be able to move in it, you know what I'm saying? Or you, right? You know, hey. Um, but, uh, it was, it was good to bring a lighthearted moment to him. So after I text him that, I was just joking, he was like, man, I was about to F and say. Um, so it was pretty funny, I got a great laugh out of it, uh, last night. I wish she was still here, but I know this meeting ran long. Um, and she may not even know that I know who she is, but Ms. Truman, if you are listening, I just want to tell you, congratulations on your master's degree. I knew you when you were in your mother's belly, who has the same exact birthday as me, except she's maybe a year older. So just wanted to say congratulations. Uh, so that was the funny thing, the thing to celebrate. Uh, the sad thing, I want to send my sincere condolence to Andrea Vernon and her family, uh, and notify you guys, if you don't know, I made a post about this on my Facebook, that there was a young lady. Um, so I, uh, as we talked about last meeting, I, I got the authority to marry people, I don't know who did that. Um, but thank you, because I got to marry my next door neighbor's daughter and her husband this summer, right? And in that wedding, there was this beautiful young lady who I could tell right off the rip that she was the bride's best friend, maid of honor, her go-to person. When I say that she stuck by her side when nobody had, uh, they was trying to figure out in the wedding, who was gonna take the baby, and she said, I'll walk him down the aisle, he can walk down the aisle with me. At the party afterwards, everybody's like shuffling the baby around, she said, give me the baby, right? She was there to the end of the night when the baby had went home with the grandmother, because her mother just recently passed away a year ago. Um, I don't know if you guys remember when I said that my neighbor had passed away. Um, this young lady, somehow, as full of life as she is, is gone. Mother of three children, daughter, sister, an extremely good friend and a beacon of light, if you walk in a room, it would be very difficult to miss her smile. Was hit by a car and killed, and they are trying to find answers on exactly what happened. So I just wanted to publicly share my condolences and share that, uh, with permission from the family, um, because they are searching for answers on what happened. Uh, with the power of, um, word of mouth, that people are questioning what happened, um, and the guilt of whoever decided to continue driving, um, I'm, I'm confident that answers will be provided to their family, uh, and what, if, if there's ever a good time or a bad time to lose somebody in that fashion, um, what a tragic time to lose somebody. I mean, it's, uh, it's truly heartbreaking, and I just wanted to make sure I share that, not only with you guys as council, uh, but our public. Because, uh, uh, I just, I just had to. Um, so this brings me to my next comment, I, I wanna thank you guys for the conversation that we've been able to have uh, on this tough, difficult, um, subject that we've been dealing with and facing over the last three months that has been in existence before we got here, uh, and I'm sure we did not put it into it by the decisions that we made, but I can guarantee you that we had an impact. And when we look back years down the line, we can say that we made an impact, because like I said, even if it saves one person, the decisions that we made here tonight mattered. And to me, life, um, is all about the highs and the lows that we go through. 'Cause that's what makes us who we are, the difficulties that we face, the challenges that we face, uh, the tragedies that we face, the triumphs that we face, uh, is all encompassing of what makes us each who we are. Um, I did make the cookies, like, not, uh, my wife made them, not my kids made them. Uh, I made the cookies, and I'm really glad that nobody decided to start eating them, because I don't, I don't brag on a lot of stuff, y'all, but it's two things that I can do extremely well. I can sell phones to anybody who's walking, um, and talking, and, and, uh, even if you can't talk, 'cause I've sold them to people who can't talk. Uh, and I can cook better than I can sell phones, so don't chew your hands off eating them cookies when you buy into them tonight, and no, I'm not making no more, first one's free. Uh, enjoy them, um, again, thank you to staff.
Thank you.
I, I was thinking, see, I was thinking, that was intentional. Um, happy birthday, Mr. Dancy. Uh, your presence in general, um, over the time that I've known you has been more than pleasant, and you are more than appreciated, and I'm sorry for keeping you here this late on your birthday. Um, but appreciate you for sacrificing and being here. Uh, Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year, and Mr. Laporte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna publicly acknowledge Corey Mays for all the work you did. You've been a, an excellent choice for the position that we hired you for, and a great steal from the DDA. Mr. Mayor, I'll wait for my box of cookies also, when you come up to my office. I just, I didn't see a box here.
Well, I didn't think he was gonna be here, I passed him down to Mr. Attorneys, but I got you before we even leave.
And for Freddie, there's a tradition in our family, on your birthday, we tell you what we love about you. And Freddie, I wanna say that you are an infectious person, filled with a great amount of energy. And since the day I met you, I just gravitated toward that wonderful personality. So happy birthday to you. Everyone else, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, and at this time, ooh, not from the, from the west side. Is anybody gonna second it?
Second.
All in favor? We are a judge.